Good morning and welcome to the Public Workshop Meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, May 2, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Stamey, seconded by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The first item on the agenda is under Public Works. We have a resolution requesting approval of a supplemental agreement for additional design work for the realignment of Phillips Drive at State Route 2081 for the McDonough Parkway Extension Project. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director, Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning Chairman, good morning Board Members. We have a request here for supplemental agreement for additional design work for the realignment of Phillips Drive at State Route 20 and 81 for the McDonough Parkway Extension Project. What we would like to do here is take our existing project where we're realigning McDonough Parkway, moving it to the east a little bit, and then eventually, of course, it ties in with the road out here, tie those two together. That project as it is, on the eastern end of that project as it is today, it stops right before you get to Phillips Drive. What we would like to do is go ahead and extend the project limits to include a realignment of Phillips Drive. We actually would move Phillips Drive to the east, and I forgot the name of the road, but just to the east of there, there's a road that goes into a subdivision there. We'd like to realign it with that. It'll put it about 1,000 feet east of the existing McDonough Parkway intersection as well, and both of those, if meet all the warrants, and if permitted by Georgia DOT, could have a signal installation there. So there's a lot of economics involved in combining these two projects. In doing that, you get the economy of savings because the two tapers for the left turn lanes run together. So if we come back and do this at an additional time, you're actually going to be redoing some work you did in the previous project. In addition to that, probably a more compelling reason for doing this is the city of McDonough had a state aid contract for Phillips Drive for that project. Until Georgia DOT figures out what they're going to do with their east-west connector, what they're going to do with 20 and 81. Right now, that project is in limbo. It's kind of in the planning stages with them. They really don't know what to do with 2081 from Phillips Drive all the way to the square. We suspect that one of these days, that Phillips Drive corridor through there may have a strong impact on that project. So instead of making an improvement to a roadway that later on could be ripped out by Georgia DOT, after much conferences with GDOT planning staff, with the city of McDonough, and with our transportation planning here at the county, we feel like that state aid contract would be much better spent going ahead and fixing this intersection at Phillips and 81. So the city of McDonough is going to take their state aid contract and apply it to this part of our project. So in essence, what they're going to do is spend that money on this intersection improvement project. Since we've already got the design underway and the engineer underway, it makes a lot of sense for us just to add that into our project. So in essence, we'll have $500,000 money from the city of McDonough coming in. Of course, we'll have to do an intergovernmental agreement there between the county and the city to work that money into our contract. We would do the design, get their state aid contract to be a part of our project to help offset that construction. And I think Rocky checked with our designer last week, and I believe that that additional work is about $400,000 or so, if I'm correct, in that neighborhood. The state aid contract's about $500,000. The design work, I believe, is about $112,000. So it's pretty much a wash, so it makes a lot of sense for us to do this. Be happy to answer any questions or comments you may have on this.
Chair, I just have a comment. I know that the parcel that the alignment will go through is a parcel of property owned by Henry County. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I know that there's two worlds. There's an engineer's world, and then there's the world the rest of us live in. In the design of this realignment, is there any way to convey to McGee Partners that because the county owns that piece of property, we need to make sure if the alignment takes place there, that that property is preserved and maximized in a way that you don't leave just small remnants that are not useful? Because at some point, the county may wish to put that property on the market and recoup some of the taxpayers' money, and we don't want to render it in such a chopped up fashion that it can no longer be utilized to be sold for commercial uses or something along those lines.
Actually, I think as it works out, we're moving that intersection far enough to the east that we'll probably end up with two corners, one on each side of what will be Phillips when we move it over. So we'll make sure that we don't leave a remnant parcel but a usable, commercial-sized piece which will be on the west side of the relocated Phillips. And I think it'll work out pretty well. Because once we do away with that portion of old Phillips Drive, we'll have to tie in some driveways, but other than that, you know, a large portion of that old right-of-way can be absorbed into that parcel as well.
Okay, thank you. Any Board Member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Holder?
First of all, I'd just like to say I'm proud to see the intergovernmental workings between the city of McDonough and Henry County. It's always good to see that happen. Second thing is I want to echo what Chairman Matthews said about what it does as far as the remnants that are left of that piece of property. And once again, I'm not blasting engineers, but many times, road designers design from A to B and don't take into consideration what's in between. And this needs to be looked at because this is a very valuable piece of property for Henry County and to the taxpayers of this county. The other thing that, and I understand that what's currently part of Phillips Drive would revert back if the other one is cut through, but how are we going to access, and I would assume you'd just tell me, from where currently Work Camp Road is? Are we going to come out, go back to the east, and then tie back into the newly-aligned Phillips Drive? Is that the way it would work?
We've got a concept on that. I probably should have brought that this morning, didn't think about it. But yes, we will tie Work Camp back into Phillips, not back into 2081.
Correct.
The thought there again, if Phillips signalizes.
It would continue in basically the same location that Phillips is today, and I mean, that's just common sense.
We're going to, yeah, basically, but we may even pull it a little bit, kind of a little bit east instead of leaving it right where it's at. We may curve it as you come, if you're coming from, say, my DOT building down there, Yard, right before you get, we may curve it to the right, just past, I think there's a slick site there, and tie in back in there. Again, trying to look at, and we have looked at that remnant piece, and how we tie in Work Camp has a big, it really determines what that piece is going to look like.
Long story short, for me, it would just be the minimum amount of impact that can be done to preserve as much of that property as we can have and make it sellable at some point in time.
We'll be, I'll get a concept to that to the Board Members, Chairman, and let y'all have that for review at the appropriate time. We've just got a very, very quick concept of that at this point, because obviously we haven't done any design work yet, but I can get that to you at the appropriate time and let each one comment on that if they'd like. Might add, Lee Hearn, the Public Works Director for the city of McDonough is here this morning for the city's, represent the city as well in this, and their support of this project. So if you have any questions for the city, I'm sure Mr. Hearn would be quite capable of answering those as well.
Are there any additional questions or comments from Board Members? If not, Mr. Holder, is this in your district?
Yes.
I'll look to you for a motion.
Move to approve.
You have a motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you Board.
Okay, and will there be an intergovernmental agreement forthcoming with McDonough?
When will that agreement be?
We'll get those at the appropriate time.
Okay.
We'll come back to the Board with that.
Okay. At this time, the Board is going to take a recess. We have Board Members that will be going in separate directions to separate workshops, and then we're going to reconvene back into this room in approximately two hours for budget discussions. So at this time, we're going to take a recess. All right, we are back in public session, and the next item on the agenda is under Finance, and it's going to be a discussion regarding the 2011-2012 budget. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, and also, I believe, our County Manager Butch Sanders will be assisting him on that. Now, just as a comment to the public who is joining us for this particular meeting, you're going to have an opportunity to see something that you've probably never seen before in county government, and that's going to be an open and frank discussion of the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. We felt like it was important that the citizens be part of the discussion that we're having to understand the struggles, the challenges, and the decisions that we'll have to make as a Board as we're going into this upcoming budget year. And so it's a little bit different than what we're used to airing, but I think it's something that our public will find very interesting and will certainly feel like they're part of the process as we go along. And with that being said, I guess we'll turn that over to you, Mr. County Manager.
You, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity for this open, public meeting. Not only is this a little unusual, it's also extremely serious. And I'm going to give you a little background, some data that we have been dealing with over the last few years, the county's been dealing with, and I think it's pretty educational as to where we are and how we got here. When I went back and looked at some adopted general fund budgets, the numbers have changed quite a bit. And I know that they have done so for various reasons, but I think this gives you a little perspective on what we're dealing with currently. If we go back to FY '09, just three years ago, the adopted general fund budget for Henry County general government at that time was $132,647,801. In FY '10, the following year, it was $125,944,935. In '11, it dropped down to $116,843,352. And for FY '12, which is the budget that this discussion will take into account, we are looking at projected revenues, and we will have to balance those with expenditures of $111,378,724. That is, in three years, a drop of over $21 million. And there have been a lot of reasons for that. The main one is our tax digest. Just looking at the last three years in tax digest numbers, in 2009, our tax digest was $6.7 billion. In 2010, we took over a billion-dollar hit to the tax digest. It dropped down to 5.65. We were hoping in this year's review of the digest that the economy would catch up a little bit, that it may maintain, we were hoping for at least maintenance of the current 5.65 that we dealt with last year, but that didn't happen. We lost another $380 million. The digest this year that we're dealing with is $5.27 billion. That's a drop of $1.5 billion in two years. That's almost 25% of our tax digest, which is 60%, is the major revenue source for our budget expenditures. And just having had that perspective, looking ahead a little bit, let's look ahead to FY ' '13. We know right now that we are going to have a starting deficit. If the digest stays the same, which it hasn't done in the last two years, which would be the absolute best we could hope for, I feel, we are still looking at a starting deficit, FY '13, of $7 million. That's because in this year's proposal, there are two items that we are plugging gaps with. We are looking at two items. One is resurfacing funds. Once again, just as last year, we are borrowing, using sploshed resurfacing dollars to keep our resurfacing program going of six miles per district per year. That's over $5 million right there. We will not have those resurfacing dollars to do that in next year's budget. We will be looking at no resurfacing or plugging that hole in the FY '13 budget. Another item that we've used to plug last year and this year, or we're proposing in the FY '12, is a $2 million number, which is excess dollars in our pension plan. We cannot and will not recommend that that be done next year. So that is the resurfacing money, the excess pension money, those dollars will not be available for FY '13. That's another reason why the FY '12 discussion that we're having this afternoon is so serious, because looking ahead, we know that we're already $7 million behind for next year. In knowing these facts, knowing where we stood, we started this process several months ago, working with all department heads, division directors, in trying to get to a bottom line. We didn't exactly know what we were working towards. We know now that it's that $111 million figure. I have to tell you that we addressed it a little bit differently this year. Last year, the main, we had two main goals last year in mind. One was to try to make, to, I guess, basically spread out the pain and cuts equally. We looked at a percentage cut in every department, and we tried to save people's jobs in the current budget that we're in, the FY '11 budget. We wanted to do everything we could to maintain people's livelihoods, and we were able to do that. In the FY '12 budget, we aren't going to be able to do that. There's no way we can fill the gap that we're looking at, the revenue gap of almost $6 million, and be able to do that. So that made it a little bit more difficult, and we said, how are we going to approach that? Do we go with the across-the-board percentage? Do we do a little more looking? Do we drill down a little bit more and look across all departments? Look where we may be a little heavy in personnel? Maybe look where the workload is less? And basically, that's what we've done. We've studied a little bit more, and we've come up with cuts that aren't across the board. They're cuts where we feel like we can put them in place without cutting services. If a workload has dropped in an area, we felt like we could make cuts more likely in that area. So it's, these are not across-the-board cuts. These are more studied, selective cuts that Mike and the finance staff are going to propose. And knowing this, I need to point out the importance, or the importance that we placed on public safety. We have not cut any uniform patrol positions or rank-and-file firefighter response positions, firefighter EMS positions. We are already at a borderline number in those two departments. We are already next to, right next to, having to cut services in those two departments, should we go any lower. We are looking at trying to maintain our service levels. We're already at the point now where we've cut back training opportunities in the fire department, and when we send police officers to mandate school or other training, which we certainly have to continue doing, we're already looking at potentially lower response times in the less important crime area. So we kept that in mind. We tried to maintain our response times as far as public safety is concerned. Mike will echo exactly what I'm going to say here too, but I also want to thank all the division heads, all the department heads, and especially our 1,600, 1,700 employees for cooperating in this year's budget. We have four furlough days in this year's budget. I know it has not been easy for people to incorporate those days into their everyday lives and their family budgets, but I appreciate them working on that. It has been necessary. And we'll talk more about furlough days in the 2012 budget as we go. But all those folks are very deserving. The division directors and department heads went back, looked at a target number that we asked them to come up with, and came up with different options. Everybody was involved in this discussion to this point, and they'll continue to be as we get to that bottom line. But that just kind of gives you an overview of what we're dealing with dollar-wise, how serious it is, and the finance staff has come up with a list of options for meeting and reaching the ultimate balanced budget of around $111 million. And I will let Mike talk more specifically about those and start the VOC discussion.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Board Members, I'd also like to thank all of you for the hours upon hours that you've actually spent on this budget. It has been a very difficult discussion at times, and the guidance that you've given us, we do appreciate it, and we're here to ask for more guidance today. And we're going to kind of go through, I know we've had meetings with three Commissioners and three Commissioners, but as a sitting, full-member Board, we're going to go over the items that we've talked about in the past discussions, but just to make sure that everybody is on board with where we're at. We have made a few changes to some of these line items, and we'll discuss those changes as we go through this process. The handout that says number 13 on the bottom of it, it's a legal piece of paper, and each page, I think, says 13 is where we're going to start. The legislative and executive portion of the county government is the first group. They're all coded as 10-point-something. As we go through this, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. This report we have shows the 2012 suggested budget, the 2012 requested budget, which was sent to us by the departments, and then it also shows the four furlough days that we've had in this current year, and it shows retirements, the $2 million that we're using to fill some of the gaps this year. We actually broke that down by department, what that would mean based on payroll. And then the proposed cuts that Butch had mentioned, that we were looking for a target amount of money, and these were those targets that we asked the Board, the departments, to come up with. I guess we'll start with administrative division, the very first one. Our proposed cuts are $57,716. That, I'm sorry, that's the targeted cuts. The total cuts are $59,955. Board of Commissioners, your budget, we've asked for a $20,221 cut, and we'll come back to that one in a little bit. The county clerk, an additional $4,480 is the total amount we asked for there. Public relations was $12,789. County manager, $10,407. County attorney, $15,357. Tax commissioner, $70,375. Finance department, $95,925. Technology services is a little over $60,000. Human resources is $85,000. Risk management, $3,000. Procurement, $63,000. Tax assessor, $127, almost $128,000. Elections are $54,000. Public buildings, $98,809. Attrition in the 1091 account, which is going to be when somebody leaves the county, before we refill that position, we'll hold that position vacant for a period of time to equal $1.1 million of savings. An additional $200,000 in unallocated cost, which would be $100,000 out of our small equipment, and another $100,000 out of our education and training. That brings a total budgeted or attempted cuts for the admin or for the legislative executive session or executive group of $282,402 over the suggested budget. One of those items in there that we still have had three-on-threes, but we haven't come to consensus is on the budget for the Board of Commissioners on the payments to other agencies line item. I don't know if you guys want to go over that now or go over the whole thing and then come back to it. What would y'all, how would y'all like to handle that?
Yes, do it now.
All of you have that sheet of paper in front of you? We had originally talked, and we'd come up with some cuts, but we didn't know if we were, you know, one group may have said $20,000, the other group may have said $10,000, so we need all six of you together to come up to the total amount of money that we want to, you know, cut in this time where we're trying to come up with a balanced budget. So I don't know exactly, do you want to go line item by line, or one of y'all want to start a conversation for us, or how do you want us to handle this? We, Helping in His Hands Ministries, the 2011 budget was $21,250. We have had a suggestion to cut that in half to be $10,625 for this current year. And again, that was made in one of our several meetings with three-on-threes. Do we, is that where we want to cut? Do we want to cut more or less?
And that's the food pantry.
That's the food pantry, yes ma'am.
I'll speak up. I think that, aside from going item by item, which we can certainly do, but I'll start the conversation off that in the current economic conditions that we're under, I personally don't see how we can keep any of these. All of us, there's certain ones that I guess every Commissioner has, that, you know, they're close to, and Hands of Hope is certainly one of mine, and Helping in His Name Ministries and the Food Pantry, those are extremely important, but at the same time, we don't have the money, in my opinion, for us to continue to fund these. Now, I would certainly hope that this economy's not going to be this always, you know, and that we'll be able to come back at a later date and maybe be able to do something. But at this point in time, it, I mean, it's $240,000. I mean, we're, you know, like you said, I think I wrote it down, or seven million plus or minus, so that's, you got to start somewhere, you know. So, I mean, I'm opening the floor for the other Commissioners to chime in. I know there's some things here that... I know there's, there's some things here that obviously each one of us have the ones that we feel like are extremely necessary. And every one of these are probably great programs. I mean, I know of some of them that I know are personally great programs, but I just don't know how we can balance the budget and, and, you know, and give, and, and give money away at a time when we don't have the money to give away. It's one thing if, if everybody's prospering and we're moving forward and these, and these help the county. I mean, the services they provide in a lot of ways, Helping in His Hands, you know, they take, they take care of people that don't have insurance that would, if they wasn't there, they'd bit the hospital eating up, you know, the indigent type situation there. And of course, the kids with the, you know, with the, with the friend's house and the Haven House, all these other issues that we have that, you know, that are, should be there. At the same time, at the same time, we don't have the money. I mean, and I open the floor to any of the other commissioners like to chime in on it.
Mr. Alada?
That is, the reduction is shown here in the final column of thirty thousand dollars, approximately. Those are not yet taken into consideration in the figures you just read, or they are?
Those are. That, that twenty, that's twenty, it's thirty thousand dollars. You know what? No, they're not. They're not. They can't be because we only asked for twenty thousand. So those, those cuts have not been added at this point.
So to the extent that thirty thousand's been requested or is shown here, that would be a slight pickup to the deficit that we're showing.
And, and it may be that, that twenty of the thirty has been picked up and it may be that we're just missing the ten. I'm not positive of that. I'd ask Angie if she can.
Let me, let me ask, refer you to the suggested budget twelve and department requested. There's a thirty thousand reduction in there. Is that the thirty thousand?
That's where, it's included there. It was cut before we actually sat down. You cut it before we started in your suggested requested budget. That's what it is. You cut it there and then we cut twenty thousand additional from there. So it is included. Thank you. I had that actually part covered up with another piece of paper.
So at this point, the amount that's in the budget of nine oh five or the eight eighty five, whichever you look at, is, is only two, not only, but it's two ten versus two forty?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? All right. So you're asking, we need to come, we need to find thirty thousand more for our cuts in, in, under the BOC from what you're requesting?
Well, what we've done so far is we, we have the suggested budget for ten thousand, six twenty five and Helping in His Hands Ministry. That, that is what we currently got that we can fund for this year. The hundred and six for a friend's house, that's what's currently funded. What we're asking is, we haven't sat here as a full board to agree to these cuts. So we want to either agree to these cuts, add additional cuts, take away from these cuts, and that's kind of what we, you know, two or three of these, one, two, three of these five that we're funding have not been touched at all. Two of them have been and well, three of them have been. One's been completely eliminated, prevent child abuse currently.
Which ones have not been cut at all?
A friend's house budget was a hundred and six thousand, two fifty last year. It still remains at that same. Hands and, Hands of Hope Clinic was twenty thousand, four hundred. It still remains at twenty thousand, four hundred. And Flint Circuit Council Family Violence, which is the Haven House, it was sixty six three hundred. It still remains at sixty six three hundred. The other ones have been cut in half or eliminated completely at this point.
I think one of the agreements with Piedmont Hospital on the affiliation is that they were going to undertake indigent care in the county. That's as part of the discussion. And I know when, when we, and I'm going to go back a few years because I think I was on the board when we first started contributing money to Hands of Hope. The discussion at the time, and Randy, you and Warren could correct me if I'm wrong, was that by funding the Hands of Hope Clinic, we were keeping people out of the emergency room, thus reducing the cost of the emergency room operations, which the one mill of tax going to that was helping to pay for. And a lot of times the people going in there did not have not, didn't have life threatening illnesses and that's the reason that it was put in there. Now with Piedmont Hospital coming on the scene, I'm wondering if there's going to be something a little bit different in regards to Hands of Hope Clinic where we could take a look at that particular one and there wouldn't be as great of a need in this upcoming budget.
Now, Madam Chair, if you look at each of these organizations, you can easily say if they were not there, the county might have to fund those positions, even if it's in its entirety or partially. And I'm going to be quite upfront with everybody. I know we're dealing with codes of ethics and what have you. The friend's house, my sister-in-law is the director of the friend's house and I want to be quite upfront in the, regardless of the comments that I make, I'll either catch it probably at home or from the public. But the friend's house has not been touched in quite some time as far as cuts. Am I correct or?
We did, all of these took a ten, a ten percent cut last year.
Like from a hundred and twenty five or whatever it was down, a hundred and sixteen or twenty. The friend's house has always got the lion's share of that and, and is that right? Personally, I don't think that's right. I don't think it's right to give them twice as much as almost the next agency in line. They have, they've certainly provided a, a need and a, and a reason for being, for its being. I would encourage the staff to verify the needs, especially to that one, and see if they still are taking care of the numbers that they once did. I know there've been changes in state laws and, or excuse me, necessarily policies of how youth and young children are handled. I don't know that they're getting that meaning. I, I honestly don't know, but before we make a budget decision, I think it would be wise if the staff would, would investigate this. I'm not, I'm certain, I'm not opposed to the friend's house. I'm not opposed to the Flint Circuit Council Family Violence, none of these. But when you get back to it, now Helping in His Name Ministries was cut in, by one half. Those people I know provide a service and feed a lot of people, especially in these times, that did not have food. So if they were at twenty one thousand and got cut in half and some of these others are getting the lion's share of the money, I think we definitely need to look and what the real needs are.
Is there a way to assess how many children were placed in the custody of a friend's house last year and compare that to maybe the year before and see if you're seeing an increase, a decrease or?
Sure. I'd like to recommend that we probably in the next ten to fourteen days get the following information from, from each of these agencies, a current audit, five-year service numbers and other sources of revenue, including all their fundraising efforts.
And I think it's, Sanders, it's, it's important that each of these be done that way so that we're not picking and choosing any one.
Absolutely.
That we're just looking at it as a whole. And Angie, I believe, wants to say something.
Actually, my friend's house sent a report over on Thursday just as his pass due. Are they typically, that it was just like? And a lot of times they will send that with their budget request, but that report came over on Thursday and there was some statistical data in that report. I've not fully reviewed it, but it is available to all the commissioners. I can get a copy for every one of you.
Mr. Alada?
You mentioned at the end it hadn't been said before and that is one of the key things I think needs to be looked at as well is, are the grants that they've been getting. Most people know that I've been on the board, not, not now, but for Haven House. And I know in the past three years at least, at least when I was on the board, their grants kept getting cut. I don't know where they're at this year. And the other, the other consideration there is I know is that they're going to be moving in a new facility and have additional expenses, so they're going to have to take up fundraising in a different sense or something, but however it comes out, but I do think that the grants that have been issued, how many are living on grants and state grants, federal grants? Because they've been cut and I don't know the severity there, but obviously their operating budgets are, are affected by it as a percentage of them.
It's also important to know, are they using any of these dollars to leverage those other dollars?
I don't know if Hands of Hope even gets any grants or can get grants to be just Chairman's point of indigent care and what they do over there to take care of the medical and most of the, I believe most all of them over there are volunteers, doctors and nurses. I don't think they get paid, so to what staff they have, it's minimal. So if they have to have one or two, I think that needs to be looked at as well if that's all they have on staff with the resping volunteers.
We, we may have a suggestion, you know, since, since especially all these good points that you, y'all have brought up about the grants and, you know, the, the needs of those facilities. Once we leave here today, hopefully we can put some, take these numbers and send them to the paper to, for a balanced budget and set a public hearing for two weeks from today. I think we can discuss these issues two weeks from today and if any numbers change, we'll have to bring that to you or bring you some information to help you guys guide on how to change these numbers, which would possibly change the bottom line of the budget, but as long as we do it in a public hearing and we still leave there a balanced budget, I think we're okay in doing that. So that might be an idea for us to go and look at these numbers again, you know, just to bring up, because to be honest with you, some of these people, you know, if, if we came in here and cut one in half again today or cut more, they wouldn't be aware of that cut taking place. So we may can postpone this discussion for two weeks, but know that it will be discussed again in two weeks.
Will it be helpful to have that information? That way you can have an intel, a really intelligent conversation based on what the numbers are showing.
Sure.
And they will, they may weigh in too, so, okay.
Mr. Alada?
Going backwards a sense, and that is on the revenue side, Butch indicated the numbers that they've come down. A lot of people have heard that the commercial side was going to be a big, big decrease this year and I think when we looked at it, if you could just, nothing else indicate to the public, the reductions really are as much residential or more so again this year as they were last year. Just to let the citizens know that our budget is being affected more so this year again because of further residential cuts versus commercial.
The, exactly. The total residential reduction last year was between fifteen and sixteen. It was reduced another nine percent this year. Of the three hundred and eighty-two million dollar loss in digest, three hundred and fifty-three million of that was residential. The commercial just dropped one point three nine percent, which is about fourteen point seven million, as opposed to once again, the three fifty, three hundred and fifty-three million in, in residential. Overall, it was a six point seven five percent drop with ninety-two percent of that being residential.
With us postponing that other discussion, we can go down to the judicial center or judicial system on that spreadsheet number thirteen. And as I mentioned, these total cuts, there is a, you guys also have a handout that lists the proposed cuts, those targeted cuts. You know, for example, when I say that in the judicial system, the judges of Superior Court, we've asked for twenty-two thousand, one hundred and nine dollars in cuts, eight thousand of that was like a targeted cut that we sent to them and that eight thousand is five thousand dollars out of technical supplies or technical and three thousand out of professional. I can tell you, I know one of those was interpreters, that they, they put a little bit more money in their budget last year and over the past three years, looking at the trends, we haven't been spending quite as much and that was one of the items that they cut out. That, you actually have this sheet that can kind of tell you what those additional proposed targeted cuts were, but the, the four-day furlough and the retirement, that was just based on the salary for that particular department times the four-day furlough calculation equals those numbers and the same thing on retirement. We took the two million dollars, divided it out with a pro-rata portion. So with that being said, there is a chart that can kind of go over these in more detail and if you want to look at them, we can. Clerk of Superior Court cut fifty-five thousand. District Attorney cut fifty-three thousand. Public Defender, four thousand. Juvenile Court, sixty-five thousand. Life Management Solutions, I guess we should talk about this one now. We, we have a total cuts of a hundred and ninety-three thousand and twenty-two dollars, which leaves them with eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars in this budget. That Life Managed Solutions generate about eighty-four thousand dollars in revenues. And what we did here is we shrunk that budget down to the amount of revenues they had. This past year, they had three hundred, oh, sorry, a two hundred and seventy, a two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar budget. Of that, the general fund funded all but eighty-four thousand dollars. So that was a very large amount of funding that we done. And this is one of the line items that the, that several members of the board has asked us to look at to make sure that it's, you know, something that is pulling its own weight, if you will, or, you know, being a, a large drain on the general fund tax dollars. So as of right now, you know, the requested cuts, a hundred and ninety-three thousand, which would take it down to eighty-four. And we could talk more about that in a little bit, but I wanted to make sure you understood why that was such a large cut. State Court Judges, thirty-three thousand. Solicitor, seventy-five thousand. Clerk of State Court, forty-six thousand. DUI, is that DUI Court? DUI Court, two, twenty-five hundred. Magistrate Court, twenty-eight thousand. Probate Resource Court, twenty-three thousand. And Criminal Justice Liaison, I'm sorry, Probate Resource Court was nine thousand and Probate Court was twenty-three thousand. Again, like you guys did in your budget, the Probate Resource Court suggested budget for 2012 was two hundred and ninety-five thousand. They reduced that down to a hundred and ninety-one thousand. So they only show a nine thousand dollar reduction, but it's really a hundred and nine because they had that other position eliminated before they went into the budget cycle. That being said, the total cuts are three, are six, are six hundred and thirteen thousand and that's really seven hundred and fourteen thousand with the cuts made by the Probate Court. So the courts, we, we basically asked them to go back and cut additional dollars. They came in there and they looked at every one of the cuts and nobody had any problems with any of the cuts and, and, and to be honest with you, we've actually been having some meetings with them in the last couple of weeks to help us find different ways to cut money and they come up with idea after idea to try to help us and they've done a really good job and we appreciate the, the ability to have those discussions with them and them be willing to, you know, help, help the total budget. The next group on the next page is public safety. We cut a total of three million, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand out of public safety and, you know, going down, Pub, Police Administration's forty-one thousand, Criminal Investigations, three hundred thousand, Special Services, ninety-eight thousand, Support Services, two hundred and eighteen thousand, Uniform Patrol, almost eight hundred thousand, Fire Department, one point one million. EMA was twenty thousand. Sheriff's Department Administration is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. The jail was three hundred and thirty thousand. Community Service is twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven. Coroner was twenty-five hundred. Code Enforcement was twenty-four thousand, oh, fifty. And Animal Control was thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars. Of that three point three million, the original budget was sixty-two million in public safety. Now, remember, our total budget is a hundred and eleven, so six, sixty-two thousand of that hundred and eleven is just these public safety. And they were able to cut out three point three million without eliminating a frontline position in public safety. So to keep all of our public safety needs in service, if you will, that's what they were able to do.
Let's stop here and let me ask you a question. Because again, this is the first time a meeting like this has been held so that the public can view this. And someone might be asking the question, well, if you were able to cut three million out of there and you're not missing anything on the service side, then why hasn't that been cut before? So where are those cuts taking place at? They're not taking officers out of the car. They're not taking firefighters off the truck.
Several of these are vacant positions that have not been filled over a period of We took fifteen thousand out of the professional fees at the Fire Department. That was for... That was for, that was to determine if somebody should be a detective sergeant, the assessment issues. We took out of CID, we took 11,000 of that, and that was for general supplies, other supplies, just basically going through and looking at a two-and-a-half-year average of expenditures and reducing it down to what that two-and-a-half-year cost has been. Also, in that 320, 3.3 million dollars worth of cuts, 2 million of those cuts came with furloughs and retirement. So it was really a million three that we looked at to go in those targeted cuts. In the Special Services Division, that would have been one employee and some supplies and things like that. Under Support Services, it was one, two, three, four administrative-type positions, not frontline police officers and some general supplies. UPD was overtime, and I mentioned to you, we just talked to the courts about trying to come up with some ideas to help us. You know, part of our overtime is if somebody was arrested at night, they'd have to go and sit at the jail till they could come up to their first appearance hearing after they got off work. Well, we sat down there with them on one day with the judges, and the judges said, you know, maybe you need to talk to these people and these people. We called that meeting for the next day and sat down with the public defender, the two different types of public defenders, with the chief of police, and they sat down and they worked out a deal that we think we can actually cut some of these overtime costs. So that was a great thing. We had two meetings and may have saved ourselves, you know, 60, 70, 80,000 in overtime that we've been spending. General Supplies and Other Supplies were cuts that UPD had given us. There are $222,000 worth of cuts at the EMS of Fire Department. That's some admin administration positions, professional, medical, repairs and maintenance, 20,000. We just bought six ambulances and two fire trucks, so we feel like that we shouldn't be having to replace parts on some of the older vehicles because they'll be sitting in our reserve, or they'll go in reserve and the ones that we're having to repair all the time, they're in reserve, can be, you know, surplus or something.
Hold it, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think Madame Chair was alluding on it. As far back, let's go back to police officers for a minute. We, while we have enough to cover the county, we have not rehired those vacant positions, number one, and prior to those, we were 24 or so positions short in, in relation to the population. Not in relation to the, but they have a formula, you need to have so many police officers for so many thousand people or whatever that number is. We were short at that time, so while we haven't taken any off the road, we haven't replaced some of those that came off the road, and, you know, we're probably kind of thin in that area, and I just want to make sure that everybody understood that. It's not that, not that we were, because if you could cut that much out of it, then that much was not needed to start with. We've thinned our basic protective services out a little bit in that area, and also on the Fire Department, are the, I don't know the answer to this one, but did the Kelly Days, Butch, you may know this, did the Kelly Days, did they equal to as much overtime as we spend now, or which ones the, which one do we get the savings in, the Kelly Days or the overtime?
We're paying the overtime, which includes the savings.
You need to define Kelly Day because we have folks that are not going to be familiar with it that are watching this budget hearing.
Okay. The overtime that we're paying now is in lieu of the Kelly Days or the off days that were given in the past. And there are not, that's something that, you know, I'm sure is a discussion anytime you sit down with a group of firefighters, and that's something that, you know, may come up down the road. But I like your point regarding the numbers of personnel in both police and it applies to the fire also. It's what I mentioned earlier in the Police Department. When we have people who are off at mandate school, who are off at different training sessions, we don't have the personnel to make up that response time. There are going to be times when we're going to have to be discretionary and selective and send people to more serious calls than the less serious calls. So it's, that's very important, and I just can't emphasize that enough.
Fred, I'm sorry, Fred had a comment or question.
Mike, when the question is, how could we cut 3 million? I think we need to start with a look at where we started from in last year's budget. Last year's budget was 58.9 million, almost 59 million, and we're going to end this year at 59 again. So the cuts of 3 million dollars that we're talking about are cuts to the suggested or requested budgets that came in this year, which were in excess of what last year's budget was. Am I not correct?
That's right.
So when we're looking for 3 million, it's not like we're cutting 3 million out of how we've been operating last year. We're cutting 3 million to the requested budget that you started working with that came in from the department heads.
That suggested budget, it says 2012 suggested budget, the one right beside it says fiscal year 2011 adopted budget.
Mm-hmm.
That was, when we sat here a year ago at this time, that's basically what our adopted budget was.
Right.
At this point in time, because of the way our insurance has changed over last year, we've done what's called a mid-year budget amendment, and that mid-year budget amendment is closer to 61,940. So that's kind of why you start the current year based on what your expenditures are going to be over the next 12 months. So we really are talking that our budget this year that we started at 58.9 has increased to 61.
So when last year's budget was adopted at almost 117 million dollars, which included what you're saying is almost 59 million for public safety, we have spent almost $2 million more, or will spend more than $2 million for what was budgeted.
And I'll tell you that there are two places that caused that to happen. One is workers' comp. We had a workers' comp audit and adjustments were made because of the workers' comp audit. And the other one was our insurance. The premiums that Henry County paid changed last year, and we, that changed after this budget was adopted. That didn't take effect, that took effect actually June 1, but those changes were made after we had come in here to the adoption process. That's why we had to make a mid-year adjustment, so it made up almost $2 million.
Two questions, if I can remember both, and that is, if we budgeted last year 59 million and actually ran 61, what makes us believe that this year we can start with 59 again and keep 59 and not sneak up to 61 again and be 2 million short? And I guess, is this the second question that eluded me, as it did, so I'll stop there until it comes back.
The first question, with the, the workers' comp audit we had last year, we've already had our workers' comp audit this year, it's come earlier this year. So we feel like our adjustment numbers that were made last year have not, are not going to go up or go down, it's going to pretty much stay the same. As far as the insurance stuff, we're in the middle of our process of our insurance agreements, but we do know that the area where about 80% of our employees are, there were no increases on our insurance premiums, and any increases on our insurance premiums in the other outlaying areas are going to be met with the employee who's taking that insurance will pay the increased premiums. So we don't plan to see any increases on our insurance. That's how we hope.
But if you don't take any increases, you already have them in, that's what I'm getting at, if they're there already, how are you planning on getting it back down to $2 million?
Well, I don't.
I understand reading this here, but I'm saying it's $2 million.
Well, we, you know, again, we, they suggested 62 million, and we basically, we suggested 61.9, they came back with 62.3, and now going through all these cuts, which do not include any health, I mean, your medical insurance or workers' comp or any payroll salary issues, we got it down to 59.05, which we feel is going to be closer. But here's the other issue. If you have 15 firefighters that leave the county during the year and we replace them with 15 more, if they left and they had single insurance and they came back and they have family insurance, that's an $11,000 adjustment to the budget. So some of that type stuff is going to be seen, but the majority of it should be.
Yeah, all I can say to that, Fred, is we, it's more than a hope this year. I think it's a very educated estimate. I mean, we know where we are workers' comp-wise, which was a big part of the adjustment, and we feel like with this year's changes to the insurance benefit program, we are encouraging people to move towards the less expensive to the county plan. I just think that, you know, there is much, much less chance of there being that type of a shortfall in those areas in the, in the 12 budget.
Correct.
I know you did the work, I'm just asking a question, I guess, similar to Chairman, and that is, do the public understand? Because on the surface, as I described it, I think it steps out and says, okay, if it was, we're comparing 59 to 59, then I guess you'd say, okay, we're just going back to where we were. But if you're saying we budgeted 59, took it up to almost 62, actual, we are looking for a true 3 million reduction.
Yes.
And there is the issue, and again, you've laid it out department by department. The other question I had was this, and that is, if public safety has gone up $3 million from where it was originally budgeted to get to 117 million, one would assume that the 117 is going to be 120 because of the 3 million overage for this department unless there's 3 million of reductions in other departments that had to be done during the fiscal year to keep it to a balanced 117 million. Understand what I'm saying?
I don't.
Okay. We're at 117 budget.
Yes.
And that included 59 million for public safety. Public safety is going to end up at 62 million, so that's 3 million more dollars. So nothing else gets reduced, nothing else is up or down on the rest of the departments. That would say, everything being as budgeted, we'd be at 120 as opposed to 117. From what I've seen, it appears that we're going to still be close to the 117 million, which means there were other items during the course of the year that were done to reduce other areas to keep it at the 117, and I'm just asking that question for confirmation.
Mike will have to be a little more specific. I know a lot of our, by holding our spending down, we probably fill some of that gap.
Well, we adopted 116 million, 843,352 budget for fiscal year 2011. We are currently 118, 119 million in that budget with that mid-year budget amendment thing that we did. So, you know, it's hard to compare the 117 to where I'm currently going into this year. You really have to look at the 120 or the 118 or 119 to the, and it's really not fair to do that either because you're comparing apples to oranges.
Well, it is significant though, because as Butch said, if the budget was 116.8 and we're really running a 118.
With the mid-year adjustment.
With the mid-year adjustment, and we're looking for 111, we're not looking to cut, you know, 5 million, we're looking to cut 7 million off our running rates of what we've been doing. It pronounces the problem, makes it much more pronounced that the problem is bigger this year as to what's happened with the budget from last year and where we're at this year in revenues.
One of the other things that we did last year that we didn't mention is, on this retirement, the $2 million that we're using to try to fill some gaps with the retirement, we took every penny of that, well, I say every penny, we took the majority of it out of the public safety area because it was just, it was impossible for us to go back in time to do a pro-rata share like we've done this year. We've actually had a full year to come up with this formula. So we took it all out there. That's why their original budget was 58 million, because we had 2 million coming out of it to make it 58 instead of 60. So then when we get here to mid-year budget, we've come in here, we've created this thing, so it looks like they went up by a million dollars when actually they, you know, they didn't, if that makes sense. It was all other departments that we spread out the actual savings on. So it's a little bit more cloudy than what we're trying to look at it here today, but I do understand where you're, because you're making a good point as far as it does look like the issue is bigger than it really is, which it's still huge, don't get me wrong. It's a major issue, but, but, you know, hopefully we can, hopefully this is the cloudiest area because of that $2 million piece that we did last year. The rest of it hopefully will work out better.
Mr. Holder.
Mr. Bush, as far as Police Chief, Fire Chief, Sheriff, EMS, as far as these cuts, have you spoken to them, how do they feel about the reduction in force or the proposed reduction?
Well, I wouldn't say they were giddy when they left, but we have discussed it with them and they've all said, we'll do what we have to do to make it work. So, but yeah, they weren't, you know, they knew coming, we've had four meetings with the Fire Department, three or four with the Police Department. You know, we've talked to each one of these guys and tried to work out things, and, you know, we made some suggestions, and, you know, the Fire Department took those, same thing with the Police Department, both of them took those suggestions, and let's just say that our target was a million dollars. We, they went back and we said, we're not telling you to cut this, we're saying, looking at prior year history, we think we can eliminate this cut. Well, they went back in and they dug into it and they said, you know, I really can't take this 10,000 from this line item because this happened last year, so I'm going to need it here, but I think by buying 28 police cars this year, maybe we can take some of it out of repairs and maintenance. So they came, it was a give and take. They had a target to look for, they hit the target. It may not have been the exact way that we, you know, made a suggestion to hit the target, but every single one of the public safety people that we talked to came back in here and hit the target that we were looking at.
And I tend to agree with what Commissioner Alena said too about, we're working basically off of a lot larger number to the tune of about $2 million more than what the actual numbers reflect. And I think anybody would certainly hope that if there was a need or a major outbreak of whatever, which we hope it doesn't, that public safety won't be overlooked and the people's safety be compromised because of budget.
You know, one of the things on the Kelly Days, back to your Kelly Day comment, while I go, you know, over a three-year period, we eliminated the Kelly Days. And what happens is that Kelly Day says that this person's going to be off of work, so I got to have somebody else to come and work in his place, so that means hiring additional personnel. And the question was, do you hire additional personnel or do you pay overtime? So it was kind of one of those things, we felt like it's better to pay a firefighter overtime than bring somebody else on with 40% of benefits, you know, it just, it kind of weighed that way, so, but I know there've got to be times when they wished that they had somebody come in and they had that Kelly Day. But as of this point, that's why the Kelly Days were eliminated.
Well, the other reason I brought that up is I knew that we were doing a lot of overtime, and I would, I just was curious if we were, if it was a wash, were we coming out ahead or behind, but I'd never heard how we were actually, not how we projected to come out because we've been doing it long enough now that we ought to know this is what it's costing us, so.
I can't give you the history here, but I can tell you that almost every government sees the savings in overtime for exactly the reason that Mike mentioned, because of the benefits and the extra that comes with hiring an employee.
That was good. I mean, I didn't know what they were, and I was just kind of curious, were we spending more money on overtime than what it would take if we went back to the other system? But you, you know, if we're not, then we need to stay what we've got.
And just to make a comment too about services, because that's always a concern when you're talking about public safety, are we going to be able to meet the needs of our citizens? And I'm going to speak on the Police Department's behalf because I know they have some specialized units, and these guys are picking up calls. So I know we have some vacancies in the Police Department, but they're answering calls too. They're not just sitting around waiting for just whatever their specific unit is supposed to be focusing on, and they've done a good job of making sure that the calls are answered in a timely fashion, and I really don't see that changing because that's the caliber of officers that we have in our department.
And we see that throughout the county. Commissioner Holder, you were talking about, you know, how, how have people accepted, you know, another round of having to go back and find money? Everybody has just, just put their shoulder to the wheel and acted like a great team member. And employees are, they're glad to have their jobs. Yes, no increases are getting a little bit old, it's very difficult, but they know how hard it is out there. The best thing that, about the news last, no, last night about Bin Laden that I've seen is that oil futures have come down today. I mean, we need things like gas prices to come down to take it, you know, keep a little money in people's pockets, and, but, but people have just been terrific, very positive, and, and, you know, there will be, when we get the direction that we need from y'all today and in the ensuing days, we'll finalize that process with everybody. We've tried to be open, honest, and just put everything out there for everybody to see and know.
Mr. Alena.
In the beginning, there was comments made that we haven't done anything in reductions and so on and so forth, and public safety, sort of what I heard, maybe I heard it wrong. Just to make sure, and we did talk vacancies not being filled, but just so I understand, Just to make sure, and we did talk vacancies not being filled, but just so I understand, the vacancies are going to make up almost seven hundred thousand, over seven hundred thousand of the three point three million dollars. So, in saying that, as I understand it, we're going to have three vacancies and C I D not replaced. And in the uniform patrol, we're having five. And then in the fire department, another four. So, those are actual, real, not to be replaced. I don't know how long they've been vacant, if it's been a month, or a week, or whatever, or they're in the process of trying to fill them, which I understand they are, the conversation I had with the chief, I believe they're in the process of trying to fill some of those vacancies and been interviewing, so I don't know if they're fresh from that standpoint. So, to the extent they were in place during the last fiscal year, they're not going to be next year, but that is, in fact, reductions in those numbers unless you tell me differently.
No, it's definitely reduction.
Okay.
It was just not a body that currently is in a police car or on the fire.
But again, for the fiscal year, that when we went from fifty-nine to sixty-two million, there was a need to have those bodies, and because in the last month, for whatever reasons they quit, whatever the case was, they're in the position of trying to fill that today. We're saying, stop the filling, which is going to end up being a true reduction of force.
And even with these eliminations, we have been, I mean, it's been pointed out to us that one more position, one more major cut, you're going to affect services, you're going to shut down a fire station, you're going to have a problem with calls at the police department. I mean, the, both of those, the chief of both groups has come in and looked at this, and again, I'm not saying he's very happy at all, any of them, but they said, you know, we're operating today without these positions. Not that we want to, but we are operating, and we will, if that's the board's direction as to use that to help balance this budget, then we will accept that. And, you know, like you're saying, we may have special units answering calls. But that's what they've told us, is that they are to the very edge.
And that's why I want to make the point, because I don't want it being thought that we're, again, the question was, where are three million coming from? Part of it's coming, as I said, from not replacing people that were here for eight, nine months already and are not going to be there next year, so that is a true reduction in staffing in those areas, including uniform patrol, C I D, and in the fire department.
It's getting down to that bare bones level that we feel like we need to do with these kinds of, with this type of economy that we're dealing with. And every individual taxpayer out there is doing the same thing.
I understand. I just want taxpayers to understand that there has been that reduction to make this number where it is.
And, Mr. Chair, I think that's another reason why I'm bringing up that issue about the other things that we provide, you know, when we're talking about two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars plus or minus, I mean, that is several police officers, you know, I mean, that is, that is several other firefighters, I mean, depending on where they would be needed, and that's why, that's one of the reasons, I personally brought up the fact that we need to take a long, hard look at it, but I appreciate it.
Next section. Okay, the next section is public works. This is mostly roads, recycling center, fleet services. As Butch has mentioned before, one of the two major gaps that we've used to try to fill the shortfall here is we've once again taken five million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars out of the general fund and are actually doing the paving of the roads under our S P L O S program, which is a qualifying event for our S P L O S program. You know, other than that, we took four thousand, eight hundred dollars out of the public works director's budget, eighty-seven thousand out of D O T admin, and I'll tell you what that is. That's professional fees, biggest chunk of that was twenty thousand dollars of professional fees in that particular line item. Again, it was, we asked for two hundred and eighty thousand on top of the asphalt, on top of the asphalt and salaries on D O T. That came from overtime, repairs and maintenance, rental of equipment, rock and stone, sign, striping, piping material, totaling two hundred and eighty thousand dollars additionally out of the D O T budget. And then three thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars out of recycling center, sixty-three thousand out of fleet services. And of that sixty-three thousand, nineteen-five hundred were the cuts that we asked them to additionally make, overtime being the largest portion on that, repairs and maintenance, general supplies, other supplies, tires and fuel. Fuel's kind of one of those, we really don't know where fuel's going to be. We have addressed fuel in our budget, we've tried to address it in each department's budget. I know some of the, one of the things that the sheriff is doing is he has put two officers per car in delivering warrants and things like that to try to help save some gas and things like that. And we have attempted to increase our budget a little bit because of the fuel, just in case it does stay at four dollars a gallon instead of, as it may hopefully, you know, go back down some. But in total, there was six million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for the cuts in public works. Of that, about nine hundred thousand was cuts versus that transferring money to another source for the resurfacing. Any questions on that one?
Mr. Chair.
I just want the board and the fact that we're there not, and of course, the people that'll, that may not be aware of it, but fleet services, and we're going to use fleet services as an example. Fleet services was cut by sixty-three thousand dollars. Fleet services is required to maintain the police cars, the D O T trucks, the heavy equipment. Every rolling stock that this county has is dependent on fleet services to keep them going. Even quite a bit of the fire repairs are done there. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I'm right. We just need to be aware of the fact that in this department, you've cut it by, or they have agreed to the cut of sixty-three thousand dollars, when in fact, if we're not buying as much equipment and his equipment is being run longer, that means the maintenance cost is obviously going to go up, and we're cutting in an area where it may not work, and it may be something that we have to come back as midterm adjustments and make adjustments to this budget. But I just wanted to bring that out. It's, and of course, many of you know that for so long, as far as D O T, and I understand that there's a S P L O S side where some funding is, and we see that here this year, obviously. But the amount of money that is spent to maintain our roads as far as D O T is concerned versus the entire amount of the budget that is spent, fifty-five, fifty-six percent of which we've just said goes to public safety, when in fact, the roads get probably eight or nine percent. So, just bear that in mind, and I know priorities are where people want them to be, and many times where the needs are for the moment. We need to be cognizant of that fact. And I wanted to bring that up about fleet services because I think it's important for people to know that they are responsible for every inspector, tax assessor, fire truck, everything.
Commissioner Holder, also, I think that when you get into the D O T, I think that's part of public safety when you look at it. I mean, because you've got, they're taking care of these vehicles running up and down the road, it's also, also, anything that happens out there in that road could cause a problem, an issue, and so, they would fall right inland with the public safety, health and welfare, and the people that, you know, that we serve, represent.
Mr. Chair, if I might make one other comment on public works. The recycling center, I know we just picked that up and it went under public works recently. And I just want to say thanks to the administration for going in that direction and for the board to support it. I have only had one negative comment about the recycling center, and that was because we didn't take as much of the different things, the different, he had to separate plastics or whatever at this point, and he didn't have to in the past, and that we'd made a terrible decision. But other than that, it's all been positive. And I just want to say thank you, and thank you to the people that are doing it, and we'll see how that plays out, because at this point, I think it's great.
I encourage all of you all to go by there also, and I can tell you that that has been a, it has been a net loss in past budgets. It was scheduled to go up and become more of a financial burden, and I feel like with a full year's operation, that Terry McMichael, Beth Tudor, and the folks over there will make it break even, and eventually will start making money on recycling, if the markets help us a little bit. So, Terry and his folks have done a great job.
Ms. Ollister.
I believe learned was, the five million dollars approximately that we're spending, if we weren't spending it, or didn't have it, or couldn't find it, we also are getting about twenty-five percent of that money back, if I'm not mistaken. Terry's done excellent job of going out, and as a result of putting forth that five million, we're getting a million and a quarter or whatever back to support that. And the other is, even having sold that five million dollars for repaving, we're only talking thirty miles of road, six miles per district, and I know, at least in my district, I've got more than six miles worth of phone calls of the lack of doing it and when is it going to happen. But we had a board meeting here a month or so ago, and the subject came up, and I was asking some questions, and I believe the answer, I was told, is we should be paving a hundred miles of road a year, and this is just to retain the thirty, which is still short, continuing to build an inventory of unpaved roads that eventually pay me now, pay me later. And again, we're, in my opinion, we're still looking for some bigger problems down the road, but as you mentioned earlier, next year, that money isn't even there to take from S P L O S, so next year's going to be, as you said, a bigger issue, where do we find the five million?
Mr. McMichael has a report card, so to speak, on these roads, and he told us in a meeting we had, he said, you know, five million dollars today, pave six miles. If we can ever get our inventory up to a good level, that may, that may pave fifty miles, sixty miles, that same amount of money, it's just we have so many roads that are so far down that you've got to do the reclaiming that whole entire road that it just is costing us. And that's what, we're messing with those roads that are very low rating, trying to get it up to, we get it up to the seventy-five rating or eighty rating, then it will, then all these guys do is put, you know, do a patch or two and put, you know, a new coat over, and it will go a lot further. But it's not.
Like I said earlier, that's ten years before we get there, the ones you're talking about in good shape today, ten years from now, aren't going to be there.
That's right. Ready for the next one?
Yes.
Okay. The next area is health and welfare, and in the fifty-ten account, we cut twenty thousand and five dollars, and that's the, that's Henry County Counseling Center, the McIntosh Trail, and some indigent burials based on what kind of expenditures we've seen in the past. The next one's a ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollar cut, family and children services, that's D F A C S. The next one is a fifty-four thousand, I mean, a five thousand dollar cut, that was connecting Henry. The next one is transit service, transit services at fifty-four thousand. And on that one, that was cutting thirteen, thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of the fifty-four thousand is actual cuts, not the retirement and the furlough days that we were talking about. And that big cut there was the ten thousand out of that amount. We actually had some A A R grant money last year that helped us buy some buses, so the money that we normally put in the budget to help buy buses, we cut in half because we got two brand-new buses, and if we had to replace any this year, it'd be two, we get usually four, so it was, that grant actually was zero cost to us, we got two vans. So, that was a good thing, so we could cut some money there. And then the final one is senior services, or senior centers. In this, this particular one, we asked for a hundred and four thousand dollars worth of cuts to hit a targeted mark. That included two positions, some money out of repairs and maintenance and general supplies to make that cut up. So, we cut two hundred and sixty-six thousand out of a line item that originally was five point three million, and we brought it down to right at five million, and that's the cuts we made in that area. And we did discuss with some of the departments, the health department came over, sat down with us, and went over some of those cuts. Yes, sir.
What about the connecting Henry now? Connecting Henry's going to stand on its own this time?
Yes, sir.
There's no money in the budget at all for it?
The general fund will fund zero dollars of the connecting Henry's budget this year. They've got the connecting Henry grant, which may even be fully funded back at the fifty thousand dollar amount of money. The people who work over at connecting Henry also work with the state court, I mean, with the superior court on the date funds. One of the ladies maintained some of that stuff, so she's paid for the date funds. And then the gentleman who took over when the previous lady left, he's actually funded out of a grant, so he's actually going to be funded, will not be funded out of connecting Henry. So, connecting Henry, they have a forty thousand dollar grant, and they have these other grants that are going to help maintain, one hundred percent of their services will not cost this general fund anything this year.
So, their grants would equal the proposed budget of a hundred and fifty-four, or requested budget of a hundred and fifty-four?
Yes, sir.
One fifteen. Had no cost to the?
No cost to the county.
To the general fund?
And we have verified that as well, just to make sure, because that's another one of those areas.
It's the same philosophy we adopted with life management.
All right, sir. The other thing was on the senior citizen centers, you know, that I think there's been some concern about keeping them open five days a week, or maybe cutting back on some hours, or doing something, is that reflected in this?
At this point, in this, where we're at today, none of them will be closed at any point in time.
Okay. So, not even the cutting back of some hours or anything, that's just about, okay, that's good. Thank you.
Mr. Ollister.
It also includes District Two not having a senior center staffed as well, right?
That is correct.
Just.
If they had one, we couldn't really staff it, could we?
Yeah.
And also, if we want to go ahead and say it, District Four doesn't have one either, but District Four's not looking to get one, but just for everybody's concern, District Four doesn't have one either, so.
Well, I'm in District Two, and I get that every day from the promises that they've had for six years, so I will.
I'm in District Four, and I get it from the Stockbridge City Council, and the Stockbridge Mayor, and some of the others on a regular basis, but I just go ahead and tell them that we don't have one.
Okay. Well, I'll change subjects then. Making the transit.
Yes, sir.
Even though the figure is a million, three forty-seven of the total five million for health and welfare, isn't about sixty, seventy percent of that also under grant?
Yes, sir, it is. Same thing with senior center, a large portion of senior center budget is based on federal and state grants as well.
So, if you took the five million of this budget, this total five million, probably three plus million dollars of it is coming back, and if we didn't spend it, we wouldn't have the grants because you've got.
Correct.
Not you've got to spend money, make money, but in this case, what we need in services are being, coming back in incomes categories.
We have offsetting revenues for those line items.
Yes.
You are correct. Yes, sir.
Angie, probably three quarters of their budget?
It's closer to like eighty-two percent.
Eighty-two?
Of transit budget. Senior services is in the forty-eight, fifty range.
I think the transit group just brought about a six hundred thousand dollar grant for the upcoming budget that he says he's got to have a matching twenty percent. That's what our budget is, and it is, I mean, that's more than last year. So, I mean, those are positive things.
Again, it represents about five percent of our total budget we're looking at, and again, when you start taking income, it ends up, obviously, much, much less than a net-net to the county.
Yes, sir.
For the services rendered, so, okay.
All right. Next one's culture and recreation. There are two line items under this particular area. One of them is the recreation department. Recreation department came in with a four point four million dollar budget and are at three point three, almost three point four at this point. We've asked for one million, ninety-one thousand and ninety-four dollars of cuts. Of that, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand were proposed cuts, and the majority of that is made up of reduction in force with different, you know, two maintenance specialists, two maintenance specialist threes, two maintenance specialist twos, nine maintenance specialist ones, therapeutic specialists, recreation specialists, program coordinator, three accounts administrators, and then some rental of equipment, communications and custodial cuts to come up with that number. And that represents one side of recreation. That represents all the salaries and your normal recreational activities, baseball, basketball, football. We separated this year something completely new and different. All the services that they provide, like dog training, or square dancing, or karate, singing lessons, piano lessons, all those other type of activities that are held at our rec centers, we pulled those out of the recre- rec centers, we pulled those out of the Recreation Account and created like a Recreation B account, and what we did is we pulled 100% of that out of the budget. It's just not there, and before we do a dog training class, they're going to have to have 20 people sign up or 15 people to sign up to where that class will actually break even, and once that happens, that report will go to the county manager, and the county manager will okay that particular event to take place. Where in the past, we did one a quarter. This year, we may do one every two quarters or, or not do any at all for the first three quarters and do one in the fourth quarter once we have people to sign up for it. The only, you know, we're fixing to start the summer day camps, and those will go on as planned, but any other, you know, small organization where it's 10 or 12 people, where it's square dancing or things like that, they actually have to provide us with information that these classes are going to break even before we allow them to take place or before county manager signs off on them to take place. We thought that that was something, and to be honest with you, what they brought to us, 95% of the classes that they offer, it's a fee-based class that the instructor gets a percentage and the county gets a percentage, so it's not ever where we spend any money on these, so, you know, we just want to make sure that we make up our difference on our power bill. Instead of having a class for one person, why don't we wait till we got 10 and then have the class? So we're just trying to make those extra duties that we do make sense to do them and instead of just, you know, letting it go every single month. They may not even have a class that show up, or they may have one or two. We're going to try to, you know, tighten the reins on that and try to help make it make more sense. So the other one.
Wait a minute. Ms. O'Leary had a question.
Yes, sir.
With the budget now at $3,004,000?
Yes, sir.
And again, having come off $4,009,000, I don't know what prior years were, but where will this put us as far as, off the top of your head, maybe, I probably don't know, but with 3.4 for Parks and Recs, does that put us at 2004 levels, 2008 levels? Any idea? Because this is a significant.
It would put us at the levels when we, before we started doing the day camp, the summer camp training, I'd say four or five years ago, level?
Okay. And again, population of the county's grown, children have grown, schools still have 40,000 students and so on, so Parks and Recs still have a program, but it does have a significant reduction to the rise levels.
And where it puts us is in a position of more financial accountability, and, and that's something that we need to work towards in a lot of different ways. We're all on the same team here, but we need to do a little better job of oversight and reporting, and we can start with the budget.
That's correct. The other line item in there is the library. We have a, about a 15% reduction scheduled for this year's budget. So they've reduced, that budget's been reduced by 331,000 from 1.8 million to 1.1,807,000 to 1,475,000.
And you and the county manager will be meeting with the library director to assist with assessing her operations and to make some suggestions on how to make it function more, I guess, more convenient for our citizens.
And I believe that meeting is next Monday morning, I think. And that's the rec, that's that particular area. The, the next one is Housing and Development. This one is your Planning and Zoning and Building Department, items such as that. We have requested Planning and Development Director, reduction of $5,900, Extension Office of $10,315, NRCS of $4,966. Building Department, a request of $389,840 reduction, $44,000 in Planning and Zoning, $70,000 in GIS, and $124,000 in development plan review for total $650,000 in reductions. The big one there is the $389,000 reduction in the Building Department, and you will see that that's one, one chief residential building inspector, one commercial inspector, two residential building inspector twos, one permit clerk, one clerk typist, general supplies, food and books. So it's several people, eight, one, two, three, four, six, six of them, I guess, six, six positions. And again, this department has been shrinking over the years, and it's basically because of the call volume necessary needed by that department. There's, there's very little building going on, and we have reduced each year to try to get it to where it's actually, you know, close to being a break-even department. Any other questions on that one? Okay, the last group that we've got here is Other Uses of Funds. We have a $750,000 total budget going from the General Fund out to the Capital Asset Fund. That is to pay for the debt service on the lease purchase, the lease, the debt service for the county for capital needs such as cars, fire trucks, the things that we just recently bought. That was done on a $4 million lease, and we're paying that lease off in three, three or four payments. The debt, next one's debt service out to debt service. That's 4.2 million dollars worth of debt service that the General Fund maintains, and we're having to make payments for that. The only other one there is a $316,000 account, which is the budget for the Development Authority, who, we moved them back in here. Last year, their budget was, I guess the year before that's when we were out in another area, and there was some additional costs, and by bringing them in-house, we were able to bring their budget down quite a bit, and they're going to maintain that same budget this year. So that in itself basically comes down to $113,071,225 worth of expenses, and Butch has mentioned to you $111 million of the revenues. Which brings us to this really big sheet, a really, really big one. And that will show you currently, as we stand here before you today, $1,692,501, more in expenditures than revenues. We do have some potential new revenues to discuss with you today, and I guess we can take them line item by line item. The first one is an increased commercial fire inspection fee. This one was brought up last year as a potential revenue. It is currently, there's nothing charged for the fire inspection fees for Fire Marshal, and this is a $50 a year inspection fee, which would total $145,000 in, in actual new revenues. Guess we can talk about all of them, then come back and see which ones we want to talk about. The 8% hotel motel tax is, we currently have a 5% hotel motel tax, and we have, last year in the General Assembly, or the year before last, they gave us the ability to go up to 8%, and we are suggesting that we go to that 8%. It will generate at a minimum, we think, $125,000 in new revenues to the county. Police report fees. Currently, we charge $5 for an out-of-county person to come in and get a police report. We're looking to make that $10 and charge $5 for in-county for a police report. That will generate about $12,000. Some additional new rentals are to take the Heritage Recreation Facility building, not, not the great big open-air thing, but just the building where the extension and Recreation Departments are located. There are two big rooms, like Conference Room B in there, that, that we have not rented in the past that could go out to do some, some rental. One, one size has a kitchen and things like that, and we think we can generate about $38,000 a year worth of rental from that building. We also had a suggestion to charge a participation fee at the Senior Centers per year, like an annual membership, which we currently, I don't think we do that currently, and it would be a very small $10 fee or something like that, and we, we, we think that that would generate somewhere around a $5,000 income. The next one is, we have, what do you call it, crossing guards that are all positioned at, at the Board of Educational Schools for, they're really flagmen to help people get in and out of the, driving in and out. That's at a cost of $408,121. We currently have a processing fee that is collected by the Tax Commissioner for roughly 60%, 61% of the total budgets of the Tax Assessor and Tax Commissioner, and that's basically to, to collect the percentage of the millage rate that the Board of Education creates, which is 60%. That's how we charge that, and we're suggesting that we add to that formula the cost of the crossing guards at $408,000, and so that would increase that collection by $408,000. And the final revenue increase that we've got is, we went back to the Fire Department when talking about these commercial fire inspection fees, to go back and look at all of your fees and determine if we're way off or we're right in the middle of what everybody does in the metro area, and they basically came in there and, and looked at a few areas that we were really, really low, and we moved to the bottom of the metro area on one or two of these items, and we think that with a change in the ordinance on these price structures, we can generate about $250,000, $249,491. Those are the seven different revenues that we've kind of got out there that we can discuss as to yes include, no not include, but as of right now, we're a million and six short, and none of these revenues are included in that. So if we include it, we continue to drop that million and six down. So anybody got any statements?
Mr. Bowman?
Well, you know, I look at the Fire Department ordinance change for that 10 cents a square foot, and I would say, you know, that's, that's probably okay, but if you're going to look at the surrounding counties, at what things cost, we need to look at everything. And one of the things we need to go back and look at is the impact fees, because we're a lot stronger than our surrounding counties in impact fees, so, the ones that haven't. So, you know, that's, that's, that's kind of another little fee that hits at the businesses that we're trying to bring in. So, you know, I know we need the money, and I mean, but a fee is, you know, is basically a tax, so. At the end of the day, when we look at the impact fees and we've got those, we know they're higher, and now we're going to add an additional dime a square foot for looking at a, what happens when you're looking at a, you know, a 500,000 square foot warehouse distribution center? That dime's going to get pretty healthy. So we've just added another fee. I'm not propagating that we're going to do warehouse distribution, but what if we were going to do a manufacturing facility that was going to be a half million square feet? Those fees are some of the things, along with our millage rate and some other things, that continually hamper our ability to get businesses into Henry County. So I think we should take a hard look at that before we implement it.
I actually agree with Reed regarding the fees, but the, the Fire Department fee, is that a flat fee or is it based on a percentage?
The inspection fee?
Correct.
It's a flat fee. No.
Mr. Holder?
I agree with Commissioner Bowman as far as, we continue to add fees, and of course, to distinguish between a fee and a tax is steal money out of the taxpayer's pocket, but the fee is for a specific purpose, and of course, the tax is for general purposes. I do have some problems with the commercial fire inspection tax. I've said that from the begin, or fee, from the beginning, because that is an annual fee, and it, it is something that businesses are constantly having to pay something to somebody for the privilege to operate. Well, folks, look at how many empty buildings we have, and, but yet we're trying to encourage people out of one side of our mouth, and we're slamming the ones that are here out of the other. I have some problems with it. Now, as far as the 10 cents a square foot for the inspection fee, I don't know how we compare, but I agree with Commissioner Bowman again on this. There's more than just taking one part of that equation and saying we're better than they are here, or we are lower, when in fact, when the whole equation is looked at, we may be considerably higher. There's so many factors that have to be brought in to whether we are higher or lower. I, I think it needs some, that needs some studying before we consider that.
Can you look at the other surrounding, take all 10 of the metro area counties and find out if they have impact fees and what they have impact fees on? I know from our standpoint, we have impact fees, I think for a home, it's $1,800 a home. I know the Water Authority has their impact fees. I'm not sure what our, how our fees look on commercial development, but let's take a look at that and compare that. The same thing with the Fire Department ordinance change. Look at those fees for the entire metro area and see how we compare.
Mr. Holder?
And I'm saying this from a personal standpoint, but the one that I would have the least amount of problem would be the 8% hotel motel tax, because people outside of the county are paying for it, and it's not citizens of this county that are paying it. But I can assure you, if this is adopted, within three months, we'll be filled up, or the room will be filled up here with innkeepers that are complaining about the unfair advantage that hotels and motels within the cities have against those in the unincorporated areas. Well, I must say, the majority of the motels and hotels now are in the cities, because with all the mass annexation that's taken place, there's not many motels and hotels left in the unincorporated part of Henry County. So those are some things that need to be looked at. Another that I do have a problem with, and I know it's minimal as far as the money's concerned, but the Senior Services participant fee, even though it's $10, $10 to a person on a fixed income or, or people that are already on some sort of assistance, could make the difference of them being able to participate and not being able to participate. And in the whole scheme of things, we're talking about that that's going to generate $5,000 out of a $111 million budget. Look at that. I do have some concerns about that one, too.
I'm going to float this out there as far as the Senior Services participant fees and see what the Board's thoughts are. We do have people who come out of county to, to utilize our facilities here, and I know on Recreation, on the Recreation side, they pay an out-of-county service fee to participate.
I would have absolutely no problem in charging out-of-county fees, but for our own citizens who have already paid tax, and even if they're not paying taxes and that they're to the point in their life that they don't pay. They have paid. They've made possible some of the things that we enjoy today, so.
$10 an annual fee as well for out-of-county. We're, we're, we'd be putting the bill for 2.7 or 3 million dollars a year for the seniors, and the seniors that live here are putting the bill for property taxes, and if somebody wants to come from another county and sharing our good fortune or other people's taxes, $10 in my opinion isn't going to do much, and I think that if they really want to come here and enjoy that, whether it's a relationship with their county residents, it needs to be a higher figure than $10.
Are seniors paying, paying any type of fee whatsoever?
I'm being corrected. That $5,000 is a $25 fee for out-of-county and no fee for in-county memberships.
I can relate. I have no problem since it's been explained.
Okay.
We anticipated your comment there.
Did you? Well, good. Good, good. I can relate. I mean, I, I, I have no problem. I think that's fair, and I'm glad to see it 25, because just as a reservoir, just to be able to participate in the reservoirs to fish. They have an out-of-county issue, don't, don't do it much, but even with seniors, they, they offer them a low rate, so. That's good.
Mike, the 145?
145, Commercial Fire Inspection. Is that a $50 per inspection or is that 100?
$50 per inspection.
Does every other city already charge that, some type of fee?
It's my understanding that each city in Henry County does charge a fee. That's what the Fire Department told us.
Do we know what that fee is?
Well, I guess that is true. McDonald.
But what do they charge? Do you know, do you know what Butch, how much they charge?
I'll, I'll have to make, I'll verify it, but I think it's 100.
And this is going to go away, Mr. Holder, when we take over their Fire Department. That's going to change, because we'll be taking over their Fire Department.
Do you want to talk about anything else on here?
Well, I guess we can skip down to the expense side, and in that, 100, 1,600... Well, I guess we can skip down to the expense side, and in that $1,692,000 deficit, we did include four furlough days for next year. And the only other expenditures we have cut and cut and cut, unless you tell us to go back and cut personnel, we have cut to where there is no other cuts in this budget unless you do additional furlough days. And we do have four, five, seven, and nine, I'm, seven and eight furlough days listed here as potential dollars. With that being said, we did throw in to this calculation what a three, what a three-quarter of 1% millage rate would be and a half a point millage rate would be, just to kind of get that out there to help, because we are $1.6 million shy. And even if you do take into consideration all those revenues, we still do not balance the budget. So we kind of got a conversation to be made over the revenues and expenditures and how we get to a balanced budget, so.
I want to make a little comment about the furloughs, because I know that you have the different scenarios laid out here. And from my standpoint, four furlough days are tough. I asked Butch to give us a breakdown of the salary ranges of our employees, and the bulk of our employees make less than $50,000 a year. When you look at the price of gasoline, you look at the price, food prices, if you haven't, you guys haven't done any grocery shopping lately, the food prices are really going up. And to ask for more than those four days for our employees, I believe, that make, on the lower income spectrum, is going to really create a hardship for our employees. And they've been, most of these have ta, that are remaining, have taken on a lot more responsibility, because we do have job openings and vacancies that we're not filling, and jobs that need to be done. So many of them have taken on more and more responsibilities at the same pay, and now less with the furlough days. So I'd be concerned with anything beyond the four days.
And then the retirement, you wanted to talk about some of the retirement? Were you going to talk a little bit more about what you were looking at as far as encouraging that?
We are, yes, ma'am. We are in the process of calculating some possible scenarios for an incentive-type package for county employees who have already met the retirement age, don't yet know exactly what those are, but, you know, we're basically trying to, you know, come up with something that may, some people may want to look at. And once we calculate that, once we come up with some of those scenarios that we can bring to the Board, we will need the Board's decision on how to, how many to offer, things like that. So that is another piece that we're, we're looking at. We still have a couple of other items that, as Butch has mentioned, we've got some potential RFPs going out to try to maybe privatize some of the smaller functions that we currently have, cutting grass around county buildings, things like that, to try to additionally drop the, you know, overall cost of this budget. But, you know, as of today, those aren't out, and those would be, I guess, additional cuts that would be made, you know, once we know they come up. They should come up in July, August, sometime like that, so we'd know more about that then. I don't know what else to, I think we've mentioned the majority.
And please note that none of these numbers on here are put on there lightly or unseriously. It is a, we as a county government don't have a lot of tools to choose from in balancing this budget. And we tried to list everything that we could. We understand that some of these are burdensome to the taxpayer. Some of them are, you know, just really tough on employees. But we wanted, and I think the Finance Department, Mike and his department, they've done a great job in putting the numbers out here, and trying to make that bridge between revenues and expenditures. And all of these, we realize the negative impacts involved, as, as do you. So we just wanted to have a full discussion. I think this lets our citizens realize where we are and what a difficult decision that the Board has to make. So I'd just say that we're available for questions, and we really can't add a whole lot.
One thing that I will add is our budget calendar, that we kind of, we've kind of got a timeline here. If we leave here today, or if we don't have some kind of conversation between today and Wednesday to create what we'll call a balanced budget as of that day, that's a one day in time. If we do that today, then we will post this, we'll send this to the newspaper on Wednesday, put it in the form that the newspaper needs it. On Wednesday, it will advertise on Friday. If it advertises on Friday, then we will have a public hearing two weeks from today. And after that public hearing, we will adopt the budget on May 31st. That's the calendar we're kind of looking at now. If we're unable to do something by Wednesday of this week, that means that the public hearing will be on a special call meeting. It will not be on a normal meeting, and the adoption of the budget's already at a special call meeting. You will have a public hearing and an adoption at what's not normally a meeting. And if we go too many days beyond this week, then we're going to wind up pushing ourselves into potentially going into June to adopt the budget, and that's not very acceptable under, it's basically, we've got an ordinance that says we'll adopt the budget within 30 days, or before, 30 days before year-end, which would mean May 31st. So we don't want to try to push it past that point, so we do, I don't know that we can say we're through yet, but unless you want to wait and come back again tomorrow, or, you know, Wednesday.
Well, we do, we do, since we do have another meeting tomorrow, we do have an opportunity to do something, but we need some additional information, because we had requested information on the nonprofits, too, and I think that would help us a lot if we could gather that information quickly and share it with the rest of the Board members.
If we can do that tomorrow, we can still fall within our window.
Okay. Mr. Bowman?
Well, one thing I'd like to say is, you know, we've worked hard on it here as the Commissioners, and you've made that comment, but we know that you guys have really spent the hours and the time to put this together, and we know it's not been easy on you, because it's really pretty tough on us, and we know it had to be tough on our staff to do this. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Madam Chair for bringing it out into this public forum for TV and for the Internet services, so that people can go on there and have opportunities to look at it, those that do not have charter cable, that can use the computer. I think it, I think it showed a very good responsibility by our Chair to put it out here in public, so that we'd have this opportunity to take a look at it and for the other people to see it. And I'd also like to thank the rest of the Board for being able to do that, because tough forum to talk about it. I mean, you know, we're talking about doing away with certain services that each one of us like, and that each one of us have, you know, our preferences on what we'd like to do with them, but I personally like to thank you for putting it out here, so that we got it on TV, and it's on the Internet, and people see what we're going through. And I think that's, I think that's something that they need to see. It's that transparency that we're looking for, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Alata?
Well, the same thing, but, and also add to it that the work that your staff and yourself have done, everybody else has done, to put it in a format that's understandable, this is not something that just all of a sudden talks because you start putting numbers out there. It's got to be in some logical format, and you've done a great job on it, your staff has as well. I just want to recap one thing that really comes down to it, and that is, what we just went over represents 14 and a half million dollars of cost reductions. So when we started this, we were talking about looking for five, six, seven, and these sheets show that there's been 14 and a half million dollars of reductions. So between everybody in the county, your work, everybody's work participating, citizens of this county ought to feel pretty good that it's been a scrubbing from top to bottom and everywhere in between this year, especially in light of, as was the case last year, that you've had to deal with as well. Fortunately, I wasn't here last year, and I could say unfortunately, but really, it's been an eye-opening event, let's say that, to this point, and I'm sure it's going to continue to be that, but I just wanted to recap it from that standpoint to bring closure to the amount of dollars that have been talked about today that all the departments and everybody that's affected, so, good job on that. Thank you.
Well, I think to go back to the way you began a little while ago, Mr. Sanders, and it's very sobering that in '09, we started out with a budget of $132 million, and today we're looking at a budget of $111 million, through no fault of anyone in this county, it's just the economy that we're in. $21 million over three years. And I know our Finance Director has lost a lot of, a lot of sleep at night over these financial concerns, and knowing that we have to balance our budget and still provide services for our citizens. And you've all done an outstanding job, and so have our employees tightening up the belt. And we're not going to always be here. And so today, we're looking at what our needs are, and we've got wants. We certainly will not give up on some of the things we want for this county. They'll just be put aside until a later time. We will get there eventually, but right now, we've just got to batten down the hatches and ride the storm out, and hopefully, when we emerge from the other side, we will still be as lean a government as we can possibly be, because it's our responsibility to make sure that we're good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and this is, this is good practice for the future.
Yes, ma'am. And if I could take just one second, and they may, they may wish in this budget I didn't mention their names, but I just feel like I have to mention the workload that Angie Sorrow, Brenda Bennett, Connie Mitchell, Angie Bailey, Randy Jevadon, County Manager, have put into creating what you see today. It has been an overwhelming task, and it wasn't the only thing we had to work on. So it's been very difficult, and, you know, unfortunately, I, we can't come in here today and say, "Here's how it is, it's balanced, we're ready to go." We've got to come back again tomorrow, think about it tonight, we'll get you some new information and bring it back to you tomorrow for you to make tough decisions. And I hate that we're in that situation, and we can't just, you know, like it was in 2004 and '05, where we could balance a budget and not really have to ask for tough decisions. Those little puddles of money have dried up. They're just gone. And now we're having to really feel the pain, and that's what we're doing this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. County Manager, anything else for public comment?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney, anything for public?
No, ma'am.
The upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, May 3rd at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular Board meeting. Monday, May 16th at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, May 17th at 6:30 p.m., we have regular Board meetings. Friday, May 27th, all county offices will be closed for a furlough day, and Monday, May 30th, all county offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day. Monday, June 6th at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, June 7th at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. If there's no further business to come before the Board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Alata, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. We stand adjourned.